Like to call the town council meeting for the town of New Windsor for January fourth, two thousand twenty-three. If everyone would rise with me and join in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meetings are electronically recorded. We go by an agenda. Anyone wishing to have something on the agenda for a council discussion should have had it to the town hall. The previous Wednesday by three o'clock. Anyone wishing to speak tonight, we have a sign up sheet over here. At this time, we have some recognition, some business recognitions, and then also for Master Deputy Brian Kalusi. Brian, I'm pleased. Brian, we went around the room at work session. You know how the council feels about your past four years. So we could go another fifteen minutes, but we're gonna present you with this. And I just wanna say, on behalf of the town, we greatly appreciate what you've done personally. I'd like to read this. In recognition and great appreciation of four years of unparalleled contributions and service to the residents of New Windsor. And unwavering support of town events. Your dedication and commitment to law enforcement are commendable, and for these, you should be proud. January, January fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Honored and delivered.
Thank you. Thank you. We do have some business now. This was kind of last minute. This was something I started probably over ten years ago as mayor, and that was recognizing our local businesses. And last year, it wasn't done. Put two and two together, you can go on. But this year, council supported me in doing this again, so thank you, council members. And at this time, I'd like to call upon Jeff and Jennifer Hathaway. This was really for, this is for twenty twenty-one. But the mayor and council recognizing seasons of Magnolia Manor for their five years of service, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Yes, on behalf of Jennifer, thank you, on behalf of the municipality group, thank you. To support New Windsor, the community here as well.
Jennifer, a few words.
Okay.
I know you got it. All right, thank you. I'll invite the others, but I just wanna let you know some of our businesses. New Windsor Liquor and Deli for five years, Belisa Mose for ten years. Ten years, Garbers Automotive, forty years, and N W S P Bank, ninety years. We will have them, hopefully, I know there was illness in one individual who couldn't be here tonight, but we'll invite them for the town work session. At this time, I'd like to call on Sheriff Jim Deweze to introduce the new deputy that's gonna be patrolling New Windsor and Union Bridge.
We're typically staying when you address anywhere.
Anywhere now.
First of all, thanks for recognizing Brian. Brian has an outstanding job here for the last number of years. In the last sixteen years, there's only been two deputies set up to control this community. Mark Pousen and Brian Kalusi, and so Kevin McGinnis will start crawling. The county already has, and he's been making his way through New Windsor and Union Bridge. Brian's done a wonderful job, and he'll do another state in another part of the county. But he also has a very important task of tracking, monitoring, and working with the homeless population in Carroll County. So he'll continue to do that with my office. So you have a very good, strong tradition in New Windsor and Union Bridge. And several years ago, I don't know if it's peak host or free or whatever we call your mayorship prior to this.
Once upon a time.
But several years ago, Neil had talked to me, and we talked about the New Windsor resident deputy program and what the cost was. And so knowing you guys were going through a lot of issues with water bills and a number of things that were going on in town. I agreed that we would literally just abolish that cost for, and I think it was a hundred and ten, hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year that the town was paying for police protection in this, in this town. And we agreed that we would split the deputy between New Windsor and Union Bridge, and Perry and I, and you talked about that. It ends up, it worked out extremely well because I needed that coverage out in, in Union Bridge on a regular basis. So with that mark left, Brian took over, did a wonderful job. He's moving on, and Kevin will take over, and I think the town will be extremely pleased with Kevin. He's a homeboy, graduated from Wintersville High School, wife's a nurse, he's been with me for about seven years. Got family in the area, so he's very, very interested in making sure that New Windsor and the New Bridge continue that tradition of having a quality deputy in town. So with that, I'll introduce Kevin McGinnis.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Am I doing the briefing yet?
Not yet, not yet. You got, you got the agenda.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. I did, I did. Sorry, I'm not a great public speaker, so I'll be brief right now. I just wanted to tell everyone that I am very honored to be here. I gotta, I've had the pleasure of meeting some of you already, and, and this is a great town. There's great people here, and, and I know that that doesn't go without hard work. So I look forward to working with every single one of you. And, and I couldn't be happier where I am in my career right now. When I joined the sheriff's office, I wanted to be a community deputy, and here's my chance, so. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, you might as well just keep standing up. I can remember probably eleven years ago, when you first opened up the Navy and Senator Levin. When you opened up, and we invited you to come to the town council meeting, we said, you're so glad to move in Windsor. So I'm hoping you still have that feeling, but on behalf of the mayor and council, the mayor and council recognizes Belisa Mose for their ten years of service, twenty twenty-two. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your participation.
Do you want to say anything? No.
We, we came from all different areas. Hopefully, we heard it was a small town. We try to grow businesses in small towns, and we try to bring our family.
And made it for COVID.
Well, we did, and we turned our Pittsburgh location into a store instead of being a restaurant to carry out because it was meat. So we did what we had to do to help everybody eat and survive.
Well, we're glad you were here to be because you couldn't have a restaurant open, and people were able to carry out. So we thank you for helping the residents through tough times. But thank you for being part of New Windsor. Yes, yes.
Yeah, this town is unique. I'm even impressed how you handled this, you know? I never seen.
He loves how you handle snow, that's all.
I never seen.
Wayne's.
Never hung around there. I experienced. I come and go in the store, nobody in my way, I have to do my order here in the night, whatever. And it's great.
And truthfully, it's good they're not in his way, too.
Yeah.
I don't know how you do it, or you do it.
We will, we will pass that on.
You just pass that out.
All right.
He's calm.
All right. All right.
No problem.
Thanks, you.
Thank you.
I'm impressed.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Anyone else here, right? If they show up, they show up. All right, approval of minutes from the December seventh, two thousand twenty-two town council meeting. Do I hear a motion for approval or amendment?
Make a motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second to approve the December seventh, two thousand twenty-two town council meeting minutes. All those who are in favor, sing five and sing aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so carry. All right, mayor's report, you got my report?
It's up.
All right. Um, a lot of meetings, got the, had a lot of communications with different folks. Sometimes it doesn't look like I have a lot listed, but there are a lot of things going on. One of the biggest things probably was Senator Carden's earmarks briefing that we'll be addressing for the next two federal budgets. There's a lot of money coming down, so we hope to be on the front door, front step, and at least requesting. Town manager Di is gonna be lining up a meeting, hopefully with Senator Carden's staff that put on the briefing. Councilman Huffman was part of that briefing, on, on that briefing, and he took a lot of great notes. And, you know, now is the time to go after as much money as we possibly can, because after two years, we just don't know. I just don't see the money keep flowing like it has been for the last couple of years. So I could be wrong, and it would be great for the town, but I think we need, need to go as aggressively as we can to get as much as we can. Let's see, other things here. Couple of things coming up. State of the county is January tenth, eight AM. I don't know if anybody else is going to that. Gary, are you going to that? That's the state of the county, the county commissioners speak. And then Carroll County delegation public meeting is January next Friday, the thirteenth at three PM. So that is where we will also give our wish list for funding in Annapolis. And I talked to, I think I mentioned this at the work session, but I'll mention it again. And I'm trying to get some clarification from budget, budget secretary David Brinkley called him today, and he's, he's probably busy finalizing a lot of things in Annapolis. But we had, well, the governor put five hundred thousand dollars in for the town of New Windsor in fiscal year twenty-four budget as a proposal. So it'll be up to Governor-elect, Governor-elect Wes Moore to approve that. So I have all his contact information. I will be sending him an email to at least consider that five hundred thousand dollar request for the town of New Windsor. That's to help with our streetscape project. Now, I don't know if there's any, any spec stipulations on that, but I'll have more clarification by the time the budget rolls around this, this coming year. Any questions or comments for my report? Not already? Committee reports, community enhancement, Councilwoman Griffin Lindman.
Hey, well, I just want to wish everybody a happy new year. And the main thing that I've been working on is we had been talking about a Christmas tree for the fountain park, and we have a live tree in there this year, and there had been talk about getting artificial tree that we could use from year to year. So I guess that's the first thing we need to decide which one we really want. And, but if we go with the artificial tree, I have reached out to three vendors, two that we've dealt with before, and one that just kind of came through town last week and dropped off her information. I talked to her, and I got a real education on Christmas trees this week. Her company, well, I, I reached out to Display Sales, to Riley's Outdoor, and both of those we've dealt with before. Display Sales are the ones that we got the hometown hero banners through, and Riley Outdoor is the one that we got the wreaths through. I did not hear back from Riley's, but I did hear back from the Display Sales. And, and then I also talked to this new place called Mosca. They're called Mosca Outdoor, no, Mosca Design, excuse me. And these trees are pretty expensive. Mosca Design, though, has a thirty-three percent off sale for the month of January. And so the price of theirs, can you pull any of those up on, for me there, Will? And I learned about these pop-up trees. These are kind of the least expensive of the trees that I found that were nice, and eleven-foot trees. I think what it is, it has a base, and then you set this major pole up in the middle from the base, and then everything else kind of comes up, and it, and it pop, it goes back down for storage. It stores fairly flatly. You can get it with lights. That, that comes with lights. You can get it with ornaments if you'd like as well. The treetopper comes with it. And so both of the companies had pretty comparable trees, I felt like, in the pop-up variety. And the one from the Mosca Design is for an eleven-foot pop-up tree with lights but no ornaments. It, it starts out at two thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars, but then you take thirty-three percent off. And it comes down to sixteen oh five ninety-nine, but then you have freight on that. Freight's pretty expensive. I think the freight's, because these trees are heavy. So the freight is almost like fifteen hundred dollars at least. And the one I got from Display Sales, that was, that, that was the Display Sales one you just showed us, right?
One picture that I have is, is this one.
Okay, yeah, that's from Display Sales. And that one is a twelve-foot pop-up tree, and it has the cool white lights on it. And the, both trees have LED lights which use almost no electricity. The, with all the bulbs on there, this was interesting, I thought, that all the bulbs on there use less electricity than one light bulb. So that's kind of nice. This one is seventeen thirty-two, and then the shipping handling is sixteen fifty. So that one would come out to three thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. So I think they're both pretty comparable. By the time you add the shipping onto the one from Mosca, and we have dealt with the Display Sales before, I really like the quality of, of their merchandise. I would suggest that perhaps we might want to go with that one if we decide we definitely want a tree. So that's, that's kind of where I am.
We put that under new business, if you want to bring that up under new business.
Okay. All right, great. Tonight, you mean, when we get down there, okay.
Anything else?
No, that's all.
Thank you. Public Works, Councilman Huffman.
Good evening, everyone. Some of the highlights from this past month from Public Works. They completed the leaf pickup on sixteen December. They did a additional swing through town about a week later to make sure there was no additional leaves put out and took care of all that. They did install signage while the paving contractor was working on Lower Church Street. They made sure everyone knew where to go and where not to go. They prepared the town trucks for winter weather by installing the salt boxes and ensured the plows were ready to go. They installed the new trash receptacles around town. You may have seen those and, and collected the old ones. Now, the old ones are being held at the Gear Lane property, waiting on a decision of what we want to do with those. Also, please let Public Works know if the Lions Club are going to put logos on the new trash receptacles and require any Public Works support. I'll be happy to help out with that. They responded to several emergency utility marking requirements called in from Miss Utilities. I'm not sure if y'all realize that they, they do that. Calls come into the town from Miss Utilities, and the Public Works crew goes out and marks the water and sewer lines for them. Typically, they have about a forty-eight hour timeframe to do it. Sometimes there's emergencies that come in, and they have to go out and do it within a couple hours. As you know, December had some major temperature swings. Public Works came in and spread some salt in several locations during the cold snap. And then they took advantage of the mild weather and performed additional cleanup in some of the town parks while the weather was warm. Want to remind the citizens, Christmas tree pickup will be January fifth, twelfth, and the nineteenth. Fifth, twelfth, and the nineteenth. And the planning commission did not meet in December. Our next scheduled meeting will be January twenty-third.
And don't forget to relay the message of good snow removal.
There you go.
Thank you. Water and Sewer, Councilman Hall.
All right, so with the cold snap, of course, it comes to water issues. So the main issue was the cold weather, frozen pipes. We did have a frozen pipe on December twenty-fourth at the Pedestal Tank. It normally has a heat tape, but that failed, and then caused the, the freeze. Our new Public Works employee Tyler Yingling was able to get the first New Windsor test by working that issue, as well as several issues, such as there was a sewer backup on Lampard Avenue. It was determined that was on the private side. And on December twenty-fifth, there was also a flooding condition at a home on Main Street, which was also found to be on the private side. There was also a leak at the wastewater treatment plant that was repaired free of charge by Mid-Atlantic. But with that came future repairs that the Public Works Department's going to need to make on the baffle tank. That'll need to be partially drained, and then more sludge will have to be hauled away until that gets repaired. A few more things, the Public Works submitted an insurance claim for Denning's well. There was a tree that fell on the fence. That was approved, and it should be replaced early in this month. There was another quote for a fence on the hillside wells due to the new open space trail. They are going to put a fence around the, the water sewer facility there. And the only thing else I have to say is that our governor announced the twenty million water assistant relief program. It gives bill credits for past due bills dur- during the COVID emergency. There's eight accounts eligible with a total of ten thousand to be reimbursed if we decide to go with the program. We would have to apply by January thirty-first, so it's something to keep on our minds. And with that, the, the town would have to waive late fees and interest penalties by accepting the funds. So just giving a little brief summary of that. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Public Safety, Councilman Corning.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have an extensive public safety report. I'm gonna defer to our new sheriff deputy McGinnis. We're off to a great start because his name is Kevin McGinnis, and I'm kind of partial to that first name. So I think we're gonna be, I think we're gonna be off to a good start. Welcome, and it's good to have you.
Thank you very much.
I will say that in addition to our celebratory meetings and gatherings that we had over December, I did attend our MML meeting for the quarter. The reason I bring that up, it's not a public safety thing, actually, was recognition for the town of New Windsor. I had dinner with Delegate Susan Krebs, which we got a chance to touch base and talk, you know, about who we knew and where, where lives overlapped, and we found out we had some good connections from years past. So it was good to do that. Maybe that'll benefit us down the road, Mr. Mayor, in some way. In addition to that, I attended the Board of Commissioners' welcome reception for the current and incoming county commissioners and elect, elected officials. I bring that up, and this kind of crosses over into community enhancement. But the event, and the mayor and I both attended this, the event was held at the Innovation Center. Did I say that right? Was it the Exploration Center? Which is adjacent to the public library, and it's one of a kind. Or actually, I think there may be two in the country, if I'm not overstating that. But the place is wonderful. If you get the chance to attend or visit it, you should. I mean, you can, there's, it's a place where you can learn different skills. You can learn to cook. They have an incredible kitchen studio. You know, all kinds of, back in the day, we used to call it home economics, but, you know, there are things like sewing, cooking, laser cutting. As a matter of fact, when I was there, there was a gentleman from the fire hall, older gentleman who was working on some signs that he was doing from New Windsor. So I had a chance to see him actually laser cut a sign that he was working on. So it was incredible place. If you get a chance to go, you should visit. It also has a 3D printer, and multiple people can use this printer. So it's a resource for the community. Hopefully, people hear my voice and take it, take advantage of it. But I thought it was incredibly worthwhile event, and again, we did get a chance to meet with our commissioner in our area and speak to a few other people and get some, maybe not commitments on some things, but they did, you know, we did get, you know, the, we did get verbal commitments to help New Windsor out, which is a good thing, so.
Thank you, and especially the library headquarters here in New Windsor. We don't really benefit from a library or events that they put on, storytelling, that sort of thing. But we had a discussion, Kevin and I had a discussion with the library staff that, you know, maybe in our fountain park, we could have storytelling. Wouldn't be, we not gonna have a hundred kids there probably, but enough to make it worthwhile. And then also, they have storytelling and, you know, a walking trail. So I mentioned about our butterfly trail, and hopefully, we'll see some, some posts there with stories, and they go from, parents take their child and read a story here, and then the story continues throughout the walk. So, you know, it's nice to have them here. It's really great to have them here. Except that we don't get the library benefit, but maybe we can start getting some other benefits from the library. So stay tuned on that, but.
Can I just mention one thing? There is one benefit in that you can pick up books from there. The books, if you like, get books from the library, you can return them there and pick them up from there. So that's kind of a nice feature.
Thank you. Economic Development, Councilman Schultz.
Evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Just a quick update on the Carroll County downtown's shopping passport that concluded on December thirteenth. And while the results aren't completely in, we do know that two of the winners, there were fifty, fifty, I mean, twenty, fifty-dollar winners, two of the winners shopped at New Windsor Businesses. So that was good to hear. The next project is a promotional video. That's a little bit of a slower project, but they're expecting it to be out in the holiday season. All the videos and photos have been pulled together, but we're working on the script, and we're gonna start that process at the January twenty-fifth meeting. In, in kind of going along with what we talked about with the governor, Councilman Hall talked about with the governor's money, just a reminder that there's local money always available from HSP. And when, when the sheriff was talking about, Deputy Kalusi was talking about the, his work with the homeless outreach. Well, that's one of the things HSP does, but one of the things that they're not as well-known for is that they have money for utilities. And all utilities, and in the winter, that's a bigger problem for people, but also can't help with our water bill outside of, you know, this special funding. I just wanted to mention another anniversary since the mayor honored so many of our businesses this evening. I came to my attention, thanks to Public Works Director Myers, that Eclectic Motors, I can never say that right, Eclectic Motors just celebrated their one-year anniversary in New Windsor. And I reached out to them because they had had some ideas for the community, and we tried several times to meet, and it just never worked out. So I'm gonna start off with a meeting with them, and I'm gonna invite Councilwoman Ribbon Lindeman. But just since we have a few businesses represented here this evening, one of the things that they suggested was maybe some kind of a monthly or just quarterly meeting of the businesses. So if we decide that's something we can make happen, I'll be reaching out to all of you about attending that. Okay, so more to come.
Thank you. Town Manager?
All right, good evening. Happy New Year. I got a very brief report, just one update on the rental housing application. We had a meeting on December twenty-eighth with Attorney Oekfender, or Code Enforcement Officer Henard, Clark, Treasurer Mangus, and myself to review and discuss the rental housing application draft. We made updates, have been made to the draft, and it was emailed to the staff note above for review. And we eventually will plan to send an informational letter out to all the rental property owners. And the letter will explain, you know, what we're doing, why we're doing it, and give them a heads up of, and why don't we go into effect and things like that. So that's still a work in progress, but we're, we are making progress on it, so. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Public Works Director?
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year, everyone. I just wanted to talk about some of our equipment and some updates on that. The cabin chassis truck, we've had the plow mount and wiring installed. We're looking into the possibility of adding a hook to the chassis that would allow for greater versatility of the truck and the future addition of a street vacuum slash street cleaning system and eliminate the need for another vehicle. This option is being explored based on our prior council meeting. Mike Reynolds is exploring grants as a payment source to fund the future purchase of a sweeper slash vacuum attachment. However, depending on the direction of the council, we may need prior approval to purchase the hooks. Have the bed built and placed on the truck to put the new cabin chassis truck in service. It did manage to reach out to some vendors and get some prices on some standalone street sweepers and entry level street sweepers that are self-contained with chassis and everything start at two hundred thousand dollars. And lastly, sale of old equipment, our two thousand eight Krauss Ford offered a however, I believe the asking price should start at fifteen thousand. I currently have an interested buyer at sixteen thousand five hundred. I've envisioned that once we are ready to sell that that truck, we could put it out on closed bids or sealed bids. And the two thousand and seven leaf machine, we originally purchased that for fifteen thousand. I value the vacuum between five thousand, eight thousand. I currently have an offer of sixty five hundred. A new comparable unit is about thirty five thousand. However, one to meet our current needs is about fifty to sixty thousand, and that would be a pull behind unit. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Wayne, have you looked at, I don't know if it's Timeco or Timco sweepers?
Um, I, I don't believe so. I can't remember the manufacturer that I looked at, Mayor, but I do know that I was looking for something based on the last council meeting that that we had a discussion on this that could could act as a vacuum and pick up leaves and also act as a street sweeper. The entry level units, they're not as versatile as what I would like and a couple of the manufacturers thought that there might be an issue with clogging if the leaves were wet.
All right. Thank you. All right. Unity Deputy?
Yes, sir. Is there a microphone you guys want me to use or?
No.
Okay. All right, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office between the days of December first to December thirty first, two thousand twenty two, responded to fifty four calls for service within the town limits. Out of those calls for service, only four calls for service required reports, which were the following. On twelve twelve, two thousand twenty two, at approximately three thirty P M, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office responded to the thirty two hundred block of Cayman Court for a check welfare. It was determined the individual was unable to care for herself. The individual was transported to Carroll Hospital Center for professional care and this case was closed. On twelve sixteen, two thousand twenty two, at approximately ten forty two A M, a dumping complaint was reported in the one hundred block of Main Street. The suspect is still undetermined in this case and the case remains open. On twelve twenty four, two thousand twenty two, at approximately seven twenty five A M, a deer was struck in the near New Windsor Road and slinging off road. The deer was put down by the deputy due to its injuries and the case was closed. On twelve twenty nine, two thousand twenty two, at approximately three oh nine A M, the Sheriff's Office responded to the two hundred block of Main Street for a report of a telephone misuse. The victim was referred to the District Court Commissioners' Office and this case remains open. On other notes, I guess I'll recover what I covered a little bit already. I'm honored to be here tonight and look forward to working with everyone in the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Did good, Kevin. That was your, your, your best report you've ever given us. We are laid back, but.
Also let everyone know, um, I know that, you know, this transition might not be an easy one, but I'm, I'm here for you guys. I, I the best way to put this, um, I work with Brian. I really respect Brian as a person. He, he was on when I started my career in, in law enforcement and, and and I got nothing bad to say about him. I know that he put a ton of extra hours and everybody knows that he did put a ton of extra hours in up here. And I know that there are very large boots to fill. I, I'm working on getting up to speed with everything, but there's a lot of meetings coming up and I know that you guys are, are, have, have a lot of events going on in town. Catch light out, game for cops. He's been working with me to, to get to speed with those things and, and hopefully it'll be a seamless transition. So.
And I, I can tell you right now, the staff is gonna be a hundred percent, you know, supportive of you as they were with Brian. You know, they're, they're concerned about the resident's safety first and foremost, and we, we are gonna be looking on you to provide that great service that we're, we're accustomed to and I, I have all the confidence in the world, so.
Thanks, sir.
Nice to have you here.
It's nice to be here. Appreciate it, Kevin.
So, uh, Debbie McGinnis, I would also like you to maybe talk to our town manager, Di, and see if you can visit us at a work session sometime so that we can maybe talk with you about some of the things that we have concerns about.
Absolutely.
That would be very helpful.
So the work sessions are normally the same day as Union Bridge Council meeting, correct?
Are they? Okay, maybe we'll have to do it at a regular meeting with stuff to.
I'll have it.
So the agenda.
Okay, I'll have to make arrangements with that because I saw the twenty third and that's, that's the next Union Bridge Council meeting, so. I'm gonna.
What do you think, Mr. Mayor? Do you want to just add to the regular agenda or?
Well, let's talk about it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk about it.
Because I'm not sure, you know, some things, I, I mean, I'm not for closed meetings, but
No.
You know.
Everyone looks at me. So as soon as someone says closed meetings, everyone looks at me.
So, but we'll, we'll, we'll be in touch.
Might be some things that fall under that umbrella, but.
Everyone has my contact information, correct? I just sent that email out. I know that was really early, so.
We have the email.
So our work session, January and February are moved to Tuesday because of the holidays.
Right.
Okay.
Probably same thing with.
With their town council meetings, probably.
Martin Luther King in January and then.
President's Day.
So they're both the third Monday.
We'll figure something out.
Yeah.
Sure.
Whatever works best.
All right.
I'll make accommodations.
All right. Thank you. West Carroll Rec Council, look at you, Kevin.
You know, I, I was just sitting here thinking, maybe I'll just if they have meetings, I'll just start going to those meetings again, but I mean, they've got the same issues, lack of volunteerism. So if they have the meetings, I'll, I'll start going again.
And actually, you know, in my news, in the, in the town newsletter, I put a little bit about some of the volunteer opportunities. So we need to strengthen all of our organization, so. All right, thank you. Fire Chief sent me an email a little while ago. Here it is. Neil, here is an update from the NWFD. The twenty twenty three line officers are Chief Steve Kramer, Assistant Chief Brad Kramer, Captain Byron Welker, Lieutenant Ten One, Jeff Lees, Lieutenant Ten Two, Chris Walker, EMS Captain Dave Coe for EMS Lieutenant Kim Kowazik. Twenty twenty two year end calls stats, fire calls, three hundred and sixty two, nine percent increase over twenty twenty one and twenty three percent over twenty twenty. EMS calls, one thousand forty one, eight percent increase over twenty twenty one and forty three percent over twenty twenty. This is an average of three point eight calls per day for service. As you can see, the call volume is trending up rapidly. We are always looking for new members and currently have an observer program for any new members who want to ride apparatus. Please visit our website for any additional information and calendar events, NWFD ten dot org, that's NWFD one zero dot org. And tickets are on sale for its Harney and New Windsor's fifty five thousand dollar cash bonanza for Saturday, May twentieth. That's held up at Harney Carbo Grounds. The Tuesday night bingo will be back up and running next Tuesday. With the winter months upon us, please remember to only burn seasoned dry firewood in your fireplace or wood stove. And as always, make sure you clean the chimney out on a regular basis. And that is from Chief Steve Kramer, who was unable to be here because they have a board board directors meeting tonight, so that's why he's not able to be here tonight. All right. Treasurer's Report?
We are halfway through the fiscal year of twenty three already, so I thought I would give you guys a little bit of a budget breakdown of where we stand. For the general fund revenue side, heavy revenue, user revenue, we've received forty four thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars so far in the fiscal year. If anything is like past couple years, we should receive a deposit in January, March and May as well, which will help with our paving projects. Rural property, we received three hundred and forty one thousand dollars. That seventy five percent of the budget of what we predicted the budget be at four hundred and sixty five thousand, so it would be safe to say that we will see an increase there for us. Local income tax, we received a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Budgeted a hundred and sixty five thousand. This comes monthly from the counties, though we should see a good increase there. Expenses for the dealment in, it's four hundred and ninety two thousand, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars has been spent. However, that all comes back through the state through grants. So far, we have only received a hundred and fifty four thousand of that and that came in on the twenty ninth of December. Everything has been submitted and we're just waiting for the reimbursements. So it should be literally any day now. We're checking that account. For snow removal, we've only spent four thousand dollars of the ten thousand that we budgeted. We can all fingers crossed that we have that mild winter and only three hundred and eighty seven dollars of overtime so far this year. Town activities, I got with Tom Andrew Di. We've moved a few things around to give us a little bit of a cushion in this route, in this line. So we have about fifteen hundred dollars left of the twelve thousand that we budgeted with the main thing that we did not account for this year was the homes on Hero banners hitting that line. But we should be okay. For the revenue side of enterprise, water hookup fees collected so far have been eighty nine thousand two hundred and sixteen. Sewer hookup fees have been seventy two thousand five hundred. This all comes from State or Summit. That is equivalent to nine lots we budget every year for twelve. So they have bought three more lots to hit that budget. And I would like to make sure that the town and town council and mayor know that there are eleven lots left at Ben Snyder, so it's something that we're already considering for the next budget. We have received eight thousand forty five dollars in interest so far since we upgraded the two checking accounts and we flip flopped our money market accounts. So our developer fees are now getting the highest interest, which is a good thing. Where it was predicted budget of only fifteen hundred dollars, so that was a good increase on the enterprise side. On expenses, nothing really out of the ordinary. I do have a meeting set up with Director Myers. We're gonna go over a couple coding things that I just are a little out of whack in the budget to get it all fixed, so we are online mainly on the emergency repair stuff. But we are looking to be good.
Very good. And halfway through, nothing is outrageously over budget.
Nothing is outrageously over budget. Everything is pretty much falling in line, fingers crossed and not going to avoid that there is no major snow.
Dana and Gary, thank you for doing the budget, so.
For the eight thousand dollars, Dana, you get most of the credit for that.
Yep, thank you. Good report. Water and sewer billing clerk?
Hi, everybody. So I really don't have too much to report. I'm waiting for the guys to read meters, so I am hoping to have water bills out by Monday, the next newsletters. I should be sending those out by Friday. Any questions?
Thank you. Nothing from the code enforcement?
No.
Lehigh update. Everything that I was hoping to have was a like a press release, but Lehigh Cement Company is going to be named Heidelberg Materials from here on out. So it will be not known, will not be known as Lehigh Cement Company. Vince Campanella gave me a call a couple of weeks ago. And I told him I apologize upfront because for sixty five years, I've called it Lehigh Cement Company and I will probably continue calling it Lehigh Cement Company. But it, it will be known as Heidelberg Materials. New business? Tree? Christmas tree?
Okay, so I guess we need to decide for sure whether we want a real tree or do we want artificial tree?
Some people would like to.
I can't hold back. I like the live tree. Is it practical every year? That's up for everybody else to decide.
What did we spend? I mean, I know that, that the some money for about.
Yeah, so it, it's, it's a hundred dollar expense every year, but what, for me, I mean, so you're looking at, if we're looking at sixteen thousand, did we say?
Uh, three thousand.
No. Oh, sixteen hundred?
Well, probably thirty, thirty, thirty three to thirty five.
Oh, I'm sorry, sixteen hundred. I'm sorry.
I got it up on the screen.
Sixteen hundred. I was trying, I put my finger on the scale. Even the sixteen.
That was a good try.
Guys are pretty sharp.
Plus, plus the shipping, which is about the same, so.
Thirty five hundred. Thirty three eighty two.
Yeah, thirty, thirty three.
So, you know, I mean, we're looking at if trees go, even if they went up to a hundred and fifty bucks, we'd be talking about at least two decades that be, you know, a hundred and fifty bucks a year, we'd be looking at two decades before we hit that three thousand dollar mark.
Do you know what warranty comes on them? Are they, do they last five, ten years, twenty years?
Um, well, I, the one company was telling me that they have these tree, well, well, the pop-up tree is a little different from the other one. I, I, I don't know about the warranty on there. I would have to look into.
I'm sure the warranty is less than what it is. I mean, they might warranty for five and play last ten, but I, I just don't know. Cause if we're comparing just straight calls, it's, yeah, you, you gotta have it last twenty, thirty years before you break even. Then if you talk about the looks as well, that has to factor into it as well.
I think one of the biggest differences, if you look at the tree that's in the corner of the room right now, the tree that we'd be putting in, in the fountain would probably be like that size and that's a little bit more commanding of the space than the tree that we have in there now. It's the same. I mean, you like that? Maybe you don't.
How long, how long does it take to get the tree delivered?
To get it delivered? Well, the, the beauty of getting it now is that we, you know, get the better pricing on the tree because for the month of January, the prices are a little better, you know, the price is really gonna go up and then I don't think it would, I didn't ask them how long it would take to deliver. But I'm sure we'd have it by Christmas.
To get a better price might be now. I don't, I don't know whether it's gonna go up dramatically in the next couple of months or not, but what I was getting at would be if people wanted to think about it a little bit longer and or, I mean, you know, decide tonight.
Do a survey monkey.
I'm a tree, live tree guy, but you know.
Um, I would have to talk to the Yeah, it, it's supposed to really kind of collapse down.
Yeah, we, we'd have room to store it.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing.
That's what we did.
Not there.
We want to keep that space available for events.
Beer and wine and garden and other events.
Well, that brings up a good point. You know, I, I, I look at more than just the fact that, you know, we're cutting, we're not actually cutting the tree down. There's, I don't know if anybody suggests or asks to get the tree. But, you know, become, it becomes an event where you kind of can give it away to a citizen and have them plant it and then they can grow it, you know, it's it's one of those things where it remains green and sustainable because we don't ever cut it down, so. You know, I thought it was neat having a live tree, if I didn't say that before.
Has anybody stepped up to say that they want the tree?
I don't know, has anybody?
We had two people, right?
We had to have a little contest, a little drawing.
What did we make? Did we come up with a deadline?
Both residents of town.
What? No.
No?
Oh.
Neither one?
One of them is.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, one of them is.
Trees be turned into memorials or some sort of commendation to a citizen or particularly beneficial program or something like that and be memorialized after used for Christmas and then planted since you're not cutting down and you're. And then planted since you're not cutting down and you're using them in time.
Maybe in future years, but we made the announcement that this tree, if someone was interested in it.
Well, I'm saying if you were to continue with.
Future.
Live tree more than just Christmas tree for a live tree program. So perhaps, you know, you know, we have a property, we plant one on the property for in memorial of someone. For some reason, whether it be who passed or who contributed or. Has some honor of some type and then have trees throughout the community that are in memorial or in some kind of. Something like that, so that the trees become a part of the community after they serve as Christmas tree, and then that. May even make that cost, um, go away because you can deduct it into whatever that program is. Um, but I also, I do have a lot of trees, so.
I think that's a beautiful idea. I'm gonna make a motion. Well, anybody else?
The idea of a live tree better, but it's, it does look kind of small on that spot, that's the only reason I. Keep feeling ambivalent about it, cuz I agree with Sharon, and in the place that we have it, the tree is, it's lovely, but it's tiny. And I don't, how, it would probably cost us a lot more money. To get a big tree, not, not, we could never get something that big, we'd have to.
Yeah, we know, we talked about the weight and maneuverability of, because it's a live tree. Is, do they have bigger trees?
Yeah, and I know the price, I'm not gonna tell you. No, truthfully speaking, we did see the live trees that were, um, when we went to cut ours down, and it wa- they were five hundred plus. Uh, for, you know, like, uh, they had one, goodness, it was like twenty feet tall, and it was, it was.
What about like two feet taller, like? Like just a little bit tall.
Oh, I mean, we pick, those were, you know. We probably could have gotten, if we went to that particular tree farm and said, we need a ten-foot tree. They would get us a ten-foot tree, now I will say this, trees are cyclical, farms are cyclical. We've probably been to six ourselves. So, we, it wa- it is a little bit of a chore to go find one, uh, but, I mean, we can work on that, I mean, but certainly, yes, to, to your point. We can get a bigger tree. Um, you know, I was being a little frugal, but, you know, we can, we can spend some more money somewhere, I know somebody that can spend more money, but, uh.
Works question, I guess. We can't get too big because of the, the weight. Sure. Could probably increase the size and still be able to maneuver around, and I think they did it relatively easy on the size of the tree. I don't wanna speak for them, but, uh, that we have, but we could probably go a little bit bigger. Um, and still be able to move it and, and get there, and possibly raise, you know, raise it a little bit, to con- you know, combine the two.
But overall, I mean, yes, a, a taller tree would look nice, but I think with our Christmas tree lighting up there. I don't, I don't think it was a big issue, you know, I mean, it, it looked nice, everything went well. Um, you know, would a bigger tree, taller tree look nicer, sure, but, you know, I don't think what we had would take away from. From not having a taller tree, but, is anybody? Is everybody happy with a live tree?
I, I would, I would vote for a live tree.
Well, let's just go with a live tree then, well, unless somebody wants to make a motion for.
Kevin gets to go to ten farms next year.
All right, any other new business? Old business, Maryland Thirty-One Water Main Improvement Project Award of Contract.
Finally. I'm gonna give, uh, Shelton Hall a minute to bring up the first, uh, of several documents that we have here, so. Um, it, I prepared a briefing paper for this, um. A little bit of background, um, the request for bids went out October twentieth of this, of twenty-two. Mandatory pre-bid meeting was held November third, and bids were due December second, all, again, all in twenty twenty-two. Followed by a formal bid opening, we had seven contractors attend the pre-bid meeting. And actually, as you see up there, three contractors submitted bids. A thorough evaluation of bids received was performed by the design engineer, GMB, and town staff. The three bids that were received were from ECM Corporation, Mid-Atlantic Utilities, and WF, the Louder and Sun. Um, so you can see the, the difference there, um, uh, big, big difference between the low bid and the second bid. Uh, the second and third bid, Mid-Atlantic and the Louder were, were, uh, what I believe is on par. Uh, being as though they're, they're seventy, seventy-six thousand on a, on a three, three million dollar bid. Three and a half million dollar project, um, and I'll get into, to, um, some more, uh, um, on that, the next, um. Uh, spreadsheet, we're gonna pull up here, so, uh, town staff prepared an evaluation spreadsheet. Um, that recorded the scores and weighted scores for five categories for each of the bidding contractors. Uh, Wayne, Tyler, our new, our new, uh, employee, myself, and Mark with GMB. Uh, scored each contractor based on review of their bid proposals, and if you scroll to the far right, so you can see the totals there. Um, you can see that Mid-Atlantic, the middle one there, it was, uh, the highest rated score by unanimously. By all, all the reviewers, the low bid, uh, contractor ECM scored the highest in the. Uh, score category, and the way we did that was the lowest score got the highest, the ten, and then, you know, did back down. But as you can see on the other categories, they scored lo- the lowest on all those other categories. Um, there was, uh, cost references, uh, local and town experience and knowledge. Um, project team, and what's that first one, qualifications. So those were the five categories, we weighted them, and everybody, uh, evaluated them based on those, uh, their, what their proposals. So you can see that, um, uh, GMB also prepared a bid tabulation comparison sheet, this is a very detailed spreadsheet. Um, and that spreadsheet compared four general requirement, uh, bid items, twenty-two site construction. Bid items and twelve contingent bid items as required in the RFP for each contractor. Uh, and average score, which I believe is the far right, uh, was calculated as well as, um. A price deviation, uh, from the engineer's estimate at the bottom there. So there was a very, um, detailed spreadsheet, and one of the things it does is. Is those line items were specifically called out in the RFP that each contractor had to bid and put prices on. And this is basically a, a math check and a comparison to make sure that sometimes there's errors, uh, in, in the proposals. Uh, that's, that checks for that accuracy, and then also just compares across the board which ones are which, um, in there. Uh, then lastly, um, GMB also provided a recommendation for award of construction contract letter. And it's up there, I'm gonna highlight a little bit in there, uh, ECM, uh, the lowest bid contractor, they neglected to properly submit. The RFP by not providing references as listed in section, uh, three, uh, dot E. Under experience and qualification cer- certification section of the bid form. Additionally, in ECM neglected to provide a list of subcontractors and properly respond to section five A. Under award of contract, therefore, the ECM bid was considered non-responsive and removed from consideration. GMB checked references provided by Mid-Atlantic and the Louder. Uh, Mid-Atlantic, all Mid-Atlantic references, uh, contacted described the contractor as being, uh, excellent at planning. Uh, focused on solution-oriented approaches to issues that came up during construction and providing a good end product. Additionally, the town has had very positive and responsive experiences working with Mid-Atlantic firsthand. Uh, all of the, all of the louder references contacted also described. Uh, the contractor, same way, El, uh, being excellent at planning, focused on solution-oriented approaches. With issues and providing a good end product, uh, the latter has not worked for the town previously. Uh, GMB's recommendation is Mid-Atlantic Utilities. So those were, are, are, are part of our thorough evaluation that we did. And based on that, uh, review and evaluation of bids received by both the town staff and GMB. As well as the town experience with ECM and Mid-Atlantic, uh, the unanimous recommendation is Mid-Atlantic Utilities. Uh, this project is being funded with four million dollars from the state of Maryland, which the town is in possession of. Um, so does mayor or council have any questions?
No, just to give everybody, that was a good, good review of the project and everything, but. Just to let you know, this has been going on for a tremendous, tremendous amount of years. From back in the nineties, actually, when the program was first the Streetscape Project, and then they've changed names just about with every governor. However, and I think ninety-nine, two thousand, the governor at that time cut the program altogether. If you remember Tony Town Streetscape Project, Senator David Brinkley got the money for that funded. And that was one of the last, I believe, last of the Streetscape Projects during that time. Then I believe, uh, State Highway Administration, I believe with Dave Cohn, but I can't remember exactly, but I think it's him. Contacted me in two thousand and fourteen to see whether or not the town would be interested in getting back up on the list of Streetscape Projects. Then, and I think it was Community Enhancement, but everybody kind of goes by Streetscape. Council was extremely supportive of it because we have, by State Highways, ad- admission at one time. Some of the worst sidewalks in the town, New Windsor, but we didn't wanna fix them up when we knew we were gonna have a project. It's taken a lot longer than what anyone ever anticipated, however, one of the issues was funding for our responsibilities. How many years ago did we have the sewer line, sewer lines lined?
Uh, I think it was fifteen.
Fifteen, and we originally were thinking it might be over a million dollars, and I think it was in the two hundred twenty thousand, something like that. So, we saw savings there, and then the responsibility of replacing the aging water line on High Street. And Main Street of Route Thirty-One. Because State Highway was not gonna come in and do their responsibilities until that was done, because if they came in and did theirs and then replace it. Have to tear it all up, makes a lot of sense, so once we're done with the water line replacement. Then hopefully, State Highway will come in and do the project the right way in a full way we, we hoped for them to do it. So, um, this has been long overdue, we have the funding, that's, that's huge. Huge, you don't understand how huge it is until you sit in some of these seats and have to worry about water and sewer rates. So this is not going to be affecting, well, will affect by not having to come up with the four million dollars or the three million, whatever, so. Counsel, I strongly support this going forward.
The only thing I'll, I'll add to that is, um, it, I've, I've been through some of the other Streetscape Projects. In some of the other towns, mainly Hampstead, and I'm familiar with what went on in, in Tony Town, but the general. Procedure with those Streetscape Projects is that the, that the town and the utility work gets done first. And then the, then the State Highway comes through and does their, does their portion. I was, when I was at the county and utility where Hampstead was, was the, started theirs. And, you know, the, the Hampstead's a little unique in that the sewer is county operated and water's town-operated. But they went ahead and did both, the, the, the county did sewer improvements and they replaced ten thousand linear feet. Mid-Atlantic did it, uh, in a water line ahead of what's now is a complete, I believe, a complete Streetscape Project in Hampstead. We get a finally from.
And we, we did have, at, at, back, I don't know what year it was, when we looked at numbers of having the project done all at one time. But it was gonna cost us more having it all done at one time, I forget, it was hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that's why we decided to do it independently of State Highway, so, um. Counsel?
I, I will say that I, I do know, working with the Water Sewer, um, Commission and, and, uh, and weighing closely. Mid-Atlantic Utilities right outside of town, it, it is amazing company, they come out here usually free of charge and do things. Just to help them out, um, great company, very skilled, um, and I would make the motion to award the contract to Mid-Atlantic Utilities.
I'll second. We have a motion and second to approve the water line replacement on Route Thirty-One. With Mid-Atlantic Utilities Incorporated for three million, three hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Comments or questions? Comments or questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, those oppose. So Carrie, big step. And also, you know, I'll.
It happened in eighteen or twelve months.
Tag along on Councilman Hall's comments about Mid-Atlantic Utility. One, this been, I don't know, three, four years ago, I was up, um, in Hanover at Gary's house, actually. On a Friday night, and I got a phone call around nine-thirty, that there was a major water line break on Lower Church Street. So I came home, Gary wanted to come down, I said, no, you just did, but, but I, I, we, Jack and I. We, and that was also a time when we didn't have a call list on emergency. Companies, so we got that taken care of, but we finally got ahold of Mid-Atlantic, and they came down from Pennsylvania. And probably showed up around twelve, twelve-thirty, three guys worked unbelievably well together. Did non-stop, and by eight, eight-thirty, they were done, but you would not know. Which of the three was a supervisor or a laborer, they all got down in the mud and the water. And, you know, I was down there the whole time, and these guys, I can tell you, they, they were amazing. And I was looking for a probably twenty thousand dollar bill on up, and it was three thousand and something. So, um, I, I, I can't speak on behalf of Mid-Atlantic Utilities. And Gary doesn't want me saying this probably, but I really think they'll be. Be out of here before the normal amount of time, I just feel with them being close here and the way those guys work. You know, another issue will be materials, that Gary's gonna address that with, with, uh, with Mid-Atlantic. Um, as you know, some materials are available, and some are months and half-year, year away from getting so. Uh, but, you know, I don't wanna put them on the spot or anything, but I just have that much confidence, I'll put it that way. I have that much confidence that they'll be in and out, and also, they will be extremely receptive to not only town staff. With issues, but with residents' issues, now we'll have an informational meeting coming up in the near future. With our engineer, our town staff, and. Mid-Atlantic to address as many issues as we can. A project of this size, there's gonna be something that's gonna happen that nobody's anticipated. And, you know, I just feel, and there'll be a process, there'll be to call here, if you have an issue, not address it with. The workers or anything, but address it with here, and it will be addressed in, in the proper way, so. Um, I'm really looking forward to this project, this is, this is huge, it's gonna eliminate, um, how many feet of?
We're close to five thousand.
Five thousand feet of aging water that was probably put in nineteen oh six, nineteen oh five, so, um, it's. I'm, I'm real pleased, this is a historic night, it really is, I don't know if everybody has the, the grasp of the, the meaning of this, but.
Just to elaborate too, um, Neil mentioned, uh, that Mid-Atlantic is, is located, based right out here on Thirty-One. Their, their, their office is, is in Boiling Springs, and at the time you called them that, that's where they were based out of. They recently, uh, purchased the, the building and moved their operations part to, uh, right out here to Thirty-One, right across from Wakefield Valley and Babylon Vault. So they are, they are literally right down the street.
Yep.
And they're, they're, I, I've, I've worked with them before, hands down the best utility contractor I've, I've dealt with.
High, high street out here, from the railroad tracks at Co-Drive, up through here and out to Seven-Eleven.
Okay, so they don't have to shut down the whole.
Now, they're, they're, they, they have, the, the specifications were set up to where they're only, it's all state highway ruled in terms of maintenance of traffic because that's all state highway. But they're only, they're only allowed to operate and run one crew at a time. So there'll be, there'll be road closures, but the, the road won't be completely shut down. There'll be traffic congestion. There'll be headaches. There's no doubt about it. But they will keep lanes open and maintenance of traffic is a big part of, of the bid and part of the process. But, and that's all regulated by state highway in terms of those, those requirements, but nothing will completely shut down.
Bi-weekly updates on our website, Facebook, so that we're informing the public as best we can. As Gary said, there's going to be something that'll come up that we didn't anticipate. Water will have to be shut off from time to time. Hopefully it's, you know, very short period of time. It'll be, you know, I don't know, there'll be above ground water lines.
There, there may be. We'll have to get that ironed out. Depends on what they decide to do. There might be a bypass. It just depends on the, the, the proximity of the new line in relation to the old line. You know, so it just depends until you get in the ground and looking at things, you don't know exactly where that one.
But the informational meeting will have, we'll, we'll have at the fire hall and have as much information out there as we possibly can. So thank you, counsel, for voting for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Water sewer rate study update?
Okay, just a quick update on that. Circap, which stands for Southeast Rural Community Assistant Project, is in the process of preparing a water and sewer study for the town. On December twenty-first, Gene Holloway with Circap submitted draft documents of the water and sewer for review by staff. We have a virtual meeting scheduled for Monday, January ninth at eleven to go over the draft documents, discuss and make any needed changes. We need the rate study complete so we can prepare the FY twenty-four budget accordingly, which we are just getting rolling with that. Circap is aware of our, our budget schedule and on track to have the rate study completed in time for the preparation of the budget. Gene and possibly Amanda, who works with Circap, will likely be attending a future council meeting to present the water and sewer rate study to, to the council once we get to that point. I sent an email to the mayor and council on twelve twenty-nine with the documents that Gene provided for you to review. And the documents are also in the folder for, dated for tonight. And there's a separate folder in there, Circap and its water. If you want to take a look at that information. So it's in, it's, it's moving forward. Any tweaks? We, they, she focuses on the water side of it first. She's already started the sewer side. And then once any changes that we make, if it applies to both sewer, then she'll adjust accordingly on that. Anything we want to add or, or, or change or whatever, then we can do that. And then we'll, we'll, they'll have a recommendation or a report that they'll, they'll submit. Actually, that will show the rate, the proposed rates and what they're, they're recommending. So it's moving along.
Yep, thank you. Leaf machine, we talked about briefly. I don't know if we need continued discussion on that.
Yeah, we did. We talked about it last, at the November twenty-first work session, there was a briefing paper that was put together that, that provided information on the current leaf machine, which Wayne Director Myers touched on. And then what the other, reached out to see what the other municipalities did in terms of leaf pickup. So that is, I put that briefing paper in tonight's folder as well. So if you want to revisit that, you can. There was a question. Go ahead, Wayne.
Yeah, so real quick, I just wanted to get permission from the council to be able to sell the old leaf machine. We would put it out for, for sealed bids with the expected value to start at five thousand and wherever we end up, we would end up. And like I said, I have an offer of sixty-five hundred. Now, we are past leaf season, but that doesn't mean that we won't have interest in that machine. And I feel as if, if we get, you know, over five thousand for it, that is, you know, half the cost of, you know, almost half the cost of what it was, you know, new. And it was, it's a two thousand and seven. So I'm looking for a little bit of a direction there. We really don't want to keep something around that we have to continue to maintain if we're not going to use it.
Do we need a motion for that, Michelle? Okay, well then I'll make the motion that we, we sell the old leaf machine.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to sell the leaf machines. We're doing that by sealed bid process.
That's what you said, correct, Wayne?
Yes, sealed bids, starting bid is five thousand.
All right, all those in favor, signify and sing aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? So Carrie.
Okay, one other thing, I think a question was raised about when we talked last, last time about whether highway user revenues can be used for street sweepers. I, I found some information on, on the web, on, on webs, various websites. None of it's crystal clear. There's room for interpretation. I did also reach out to Bill George with MML to ask him about it, but he was out of office until I think he's coming back tomorrow.
As it says, to maintain roads. Well, that's interpretation.
And they split up, there's certain categories for, for different, a couple of different municipalities, more than major municipalities. And one of them that they listed specifically, they listed street sweeping, but it was only one, it was only one county, I believe. It wasn't, it wasn't unanimous across the board that street sweeping was considered eligible cost.
I, I could have been wrong, you know.
So I did, I did look into it.
It seems like years ago, you could buy equipment to maintain roads, but maybe that's been changed to just paving. I don't know. But either way, we're going to have to pay for something out of our general fund, whether it's, you know, taking less out for the highway user revenue for one or the other, still going to have to pay, pay for it in the long run if we decide to buy a, a machine of some type. So, so moving forward, I'd, I'd, I'd like to express my opinion that although I think a, a leaf machine is beneficial to the town, a leaf, a leaf vacuum that citizens could that, you know, put their leaves close to the curb and they'd be vacuumed. That's, that's not my number one priority though. My number one priority is getting a machine that can clean the, the gutters, the curbs, along the curbs and the gutters. There was a tremendous amount of leaves in the gutters this year. And our public works went out and rented a machine to be able to clean some of that up. And, and they did a fine job. I know they didn't do a job as good as they would have liked because they only had time to make a pass and keep on moving. But you can walk around town today, right today, and you can find gutters that are completely covered with leaves. You cannot see that there is a, a drain there. It's totally covered. And you know, residents don't necessarily clean those. You know, I know some do and some don't, but there is some that do not. And the town is going to have some major impacts from those. Either we're going to clog up our, our system, or we're going to have accidents because water is going to freeze because it cannot drain. So my number one priority is moving forward, it would be to have the public works buy a machine that can, number one, clean the, the gutters, the curbing next to the, you know, the road. And, and if we're able to do something that, that is able to vacuum as well, the, the leaves, fine. But I think that should be, you know, in my opinion, that should be what we should be looking for moving forward.
And, and I'll, I'll, I'd like to say, I'd like to say something real quick. So I completely agree with Councilman Huffman. I think that over the years, we've allowed citizens to rake leaves into the curbing gutters. And just at, at times, it's really, it's really bad timing because they break them out in inclement weather, you know, before storms out of, out of their pickup turn. We're not able to get them collected before they end up in the storm drains. And we really like bags and cans for residential pickup. But as far as our duties as a public works department, it, Councilman Huffman's right, it's necessary to have a piece of equipment that's safe and operates properly to clean up the streets. And has he, as he mentioned, we did rent a skid loader with a sweeper attachment on it. And we utilized our dump trailer to clean things up. But we didn't, you know, we were unable, didn't do as good a job as what we wanted. But that's, that's what we're kind of looking for is a piece of equipment to add to our fleet to, to be able to maintain the roads. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other old business? Residents concerns?
Not here.
None? Any announcements? Anything going on in Heritage Committee?
I will say for folks who might be interested in town history, we usually meet the first Monday of the month because of the holiday. We're meeting on the ninth at seven o'clock. The museum and no knowledge of history or expertise is required, just a love of the town. So please join us.
Up, upcoming meetings, we got Tuesday, January seventeenth for the work session and February first for the council and then Tuesday again, February twenty-first for the work session. So there are Tuesday dates for the work sessions in January and.
And thank you everyone for coming out for our meeting tonight. Thank you businesses for your years of service here in New Windsor. Again, if there's anything that we can do besides snow removal, let us know. You know.
Is there any other town that does that? I, I, I'm, I'm just.
Well, probably not due to the fact that they probably have fifty to a hundred businesses. And that might be cost prohibitive. You know, I would love for a council member to say we, we're doing too much because we have too many businesses or not too many businesses, but so many businesses that we, we can't. But I'm not sure if they do, but it's a small, I started this, like I say, ten years ago, eleven years, I can't remember now. And start recognizing businesses. It's, it's a little token of the council's appreciation for what you do and for, for being part of New Windsor. We, we need more businesses, you know. And hopefully, you know, in the next couple of years, we'll see some of maybe Dealman Inn. And then, you know, I've been saying this, that, you know, and I know it's corny, but if you build it, they'll come. And I just feel the Dealman Inn is a hub of future growth of economic development. That time will, will tell, but well, that's, that'll be up to an individual that wants to come in. My, my approach, my recommendation to the council will be that once we get hopefully another grant to do infrastructure on the interior, heating, plumbing, electrical. Dealman Inn. And then we, we put it out for RFP or request for proposals. And then people submit what they have. You know, I've had a lot of ideas, but a lot of people that have had these ideas are great ideas, but they want the town to fund it. And it's like, there's going to have to be a financial commitment, in my opinion, on an investor's part. And then depending on what, what type of business, you know. But that's, that's. Well, we're, we're glad, we're glad, we're, we're, we're glad that you are here and that you think highly of town staff. Well, give, give Tony Town the opportunity, give them the chance. But we, we can't, we can't work on that here. All right, we appreciate it. All right.
That's the reason why I came into Old Town. Because it's so much better than being in a big area and being a little fish than having to be a big company where you're not the person. You're just a number. We don't feel that way.
Well, that's good.
That's why we came here.
All right, you're doing a good job, counsel.
Doing a good job.
Thank you for the compliment. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, do I have a motion for a German?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify and sing aye? Those opposed? So Carrie.